Good afternoon. I want to call to order the special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees convening as the Risk Management Committee, held on September 16, 2020. And I would ask our General Counsel Carolyn Schellman to call the role, please.
Yes, sir. Dr. Mackey? Mr. Kelly?
Present.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mayor Nuremberg? And Mr. Steen?
Present.
We have four board members. We do have a forum, sir.
Let's proceed. So I'm going to call on our facilitator, Ivan.
Thank you Chair Steen, and good afternoon. My name is Ivan. We thank you for joining the September 16th special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees convening as the Risk Management Committee by teleconference. The board is always interested in hearing public input. If you have pre-registered to speak during the public comment of the portion of the agenda, please press zero on your phone keypad now to be put in the queue to speak. Again, please press zero. A member of our staff will then take your name, and when you hear Chair Steen say your name, your line will be open and you'll have two minutes to speak. You will hear a chime sound to indicate you have 10 seconds remaining to speak. For all others who speak during this meeting, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. I'll now turn the call over to Chair Steen.
Thank you, Ivan. Let's move to Agenda Item 2, which is the safety message, which today is going to be delivered by Mr. Fred Bonnewell. Mr. Bonnewell?
Yes. Thank you Chair Steen. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, members of our senior leadership team. Since January, we first started tracking the pandemic, which included messaging our employees for awareness. In February, under the leadership of our President and CEO, Paula Gold Williams, we met with our senior leadership team and split the company into three teams, white, blue, and orange teams. This resulted in nearly 1,300 members of our workforce working from home or being dispatched from home on a daily basis. We were one of the first companies to make this decision, and today we remain working much in the same mode. At the outset, with the world seemingly crashing down around us, did we truly believe that our commitment to serve our community 24/7 without qualification for fearful circumstance? Our ability to deliver service to our customers with the force of our seven pillars has never wavered. We reached out to gain global, nationwide, regional, state, and local perspective through this landscape that has enabled us to meet this challenge head-on so far. We've made changes in reimagining our workplace to maintain service to our community through this time of adversity, as we have maintained facial coverings at all times despite the intense heat of the summer, remained working at a safe distance from each other as well. We've clung together with our spirit of partnership and care for each other is what makes our workplace special. Although, or perhaps because we have imperfections, in a mindset of continuous improvement, we endeavor to exemplify our commitment to provide safe, reliable electric and gas service to our customers and our community. Without a vaccine, however, we know these times will still remain uncertain. We have something valuable, specifically the record that is defined by our actions. By caring for each other through people first, with empathy and courage, we can preserve and improve upon our performance, but we must stay focused. Today, we still face the same risk at the outset of the pandemic, but we remain protected, watching each other's back, stay a safe distance from each other, and washing our hands. We will be the last to return to regular work mode as we knew it before COVID-19. That concludes my safety message for today. Remember, zero harm through safety.
Thank you, Mr. Bonnewell. Well done. Let's move to Agenda Item 3, which is the invocation. Orlando Flores, Mr. Flores, go ahead.
Thank you Chair Steen. For a quiet moment, I invite you to express gratitude for our health, for our families and our friends, and for the opportunity to come together as a community today. We honor our trustees for the responsibility they bear. We wish them success today in making decisions with wisdom and humility. We are reminded that we are all stewards acting on behalf of our customers. May we accomplish our goals together with that singular purpose in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. The next Agenda Item, Agenda Item 4, is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We'll follow a similar process as to what we've done for in-person board meetings. I'll invite pre-registered speakers to speak in the order in which they registered, so we may hear their comments. They may only address the board on CPS energy-related business listed on the posted agenda for this meeting. For this meeting, we have three registered speakers who will each have two minutes to speak. Speakers will hear a chime sound when 10 seconds remain, letting them know that they should wrap up their comments. Speakers should state their first and last name, what organization or group they represent if applicable, and indicate the Agenda Item number they're going to speak about. So our first speaker is Richard Perez, followed by Catherine Fraser. Mr. Perez?
Chair Steen, this is Ivan, the moderator. Mr. Perez is having a little bit of technical difficulties. Can we move him to the end, please?
Yes. Then we will have Catherine Fraser, Ms. Fraser.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, my name is Catherine Fraser, and I'm with Environment Texas. We're a nonprofit advocate group for clean air, clean water, and open spaces, and we work all across Texas. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide public comment today. I'm here to ask you all to close the Spruce Coal Plant. We know that coal plants present a host of threats to the environment and human health, exacerbating climate change and emitting toxic air pollutants that increase risk of respiratory and cardiovascular diseases. The climate crisis is here, with record-breaking wildfires out West and extreme weather and hurricanes here in Texas. We're already feeling the effects of climate change. Eliminating global warming solutions from this facility and others like it is a top priority in the fight against the climate crisis. With clean energy and modern technology, we can achieve a future without coal. Shutting this plant down for good will bring us closer to achieving that green, clean future powered by renewables. Given the environmental and human health risks posed by this plant, I'm asking that you move to shut down the Spruce Coal Plant. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser. Let's move to Dr. Terry Burns, and then he'll be followed by Richard Perez.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Dr. Terry Burns with the Sherer Club. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and happy DC stays this September. In the last month, CPS has had three full-page Express News ads and one John Steen CPS promotional commentary in the SA report. This looks like self-promotion at ratepayer expense, possibly to counter our Coalition's Charter Amendment proposal. You're not spending this money to gain market share. I refer you to Chris Tomlinson's Express News July 13th commentary, quote, "Boards should reconsider CEOs' pay." He uses the word "corporatocracy" and rejects the idea that, quote, "Overpaying executives is the only way to attract top talent. We have known for years that the more a chief executive is paid compared with peers, the less well the company performs on average. Most importantly, we know companies with a diverse board of directors with lower-paid executives outperform companies with bigger executive salaries." Yet, none of these facts, proved in dozens of business school case studies, have convinced boards to stop overpaying executive compensation. Sorry, overpaying, period. Executive compensation climbs because the CEO helps choose who sits on the corporate board that determines his or her salary. And no one on those boards is looking out for the average worker. Until these facts change, top executives will treat corporations like they're personal cash machines. This is CPS, this is San Antonio, our board by chambers. We need to stop this, and meanwhile, Austin Energy will achieve carbon-free in 2035, not 50. We need action now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Let's move to our final speaker, if he's ready. Richard Perez?
Good afternoon, Chairman Steen, and members of the CPS Energy Board of Directors. My name is Richard Perez. I run a small not-for-profit in San Antonio called the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, and I'm happy to be with you all today. My message today is very simple and very clear, and that is a heartfelt thank you to you, members of the board, and to the CPS Energy staff. I think Mr. Bonnewell laid it out so perfectly well. CPS Energy has gone above and beyond the call of duty to keep this city running and to keep their employees safe, those dedicated employees that are turning on the lights for us every single day. It's my understanding, or actually, I know that 90% of y'all's customers are residential, and I'm not aware of a single customer that has had their electricity turned off as a result of the pandemic. Same goes for your business clients, and 90% of those being small businesses, they all do not have to worry about getting shut off because of the dedication and the commitment that you all have to keeping citizens, average workers, and businesses alike with their lights on to be able to continue to work and to keep people employed. And so my message is just to say thank you. The San Antonio Chamber of Commerce appreciates CPS's continued commitment to this community, and only as a result of y'all being so well-run through the foresight and wisdom that the board provides to the administration can that happen. And so with that, Mr. Chairman, I say thank you and continue the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. That concludes the public comment portion of our meeting. And let's move to Agenda Item 5, which is the CEOs' remarks, and I'd call on Ms. Paula Gold Williams.
Thank you Chair Steen, and thank you very much to all of our board members. I'm going to make my comments fairly brief since we do have another meeting on Monday, and I'll make some more general comments on Monday. This is, though, a special meeting. The board convenes a couple of extra times a year to also look at broad risks and make sure that management is focused on a wide range of risks. We have had an extensive formal risk program for many years. That program has evolved. Every single senior leader in our organization manages a suite of risks that go down into the detailed aspects of the responsibilities that they have, all the way to the front lines of their organization. We also look at broad risks, risks that are common not just at the broader business level or the broader municipal utility level, but across the nation and in some cases, across the globe, i.e., again, the pandemic itself has made it so that we have to think about risks that can travel halfway around the globe and affect our community, our customers, and our employees. This session, we are doing something a little bit different. We really try to pay attention to the current landscape. We take into consideration the various discussions that we've had, the items that you've raised to our attention, the suggestions and guidance that you have given, and we try to take an inventory of that and make it as relevant as possible in the moment. So accordingly, after Vice Chair Dr. Mackey launches the risk portion of this meeting, we will have a section, Section Number 7, and it will be, again, about business continuity, but it will also be tied to metrics and measures. I will say from the very onset, Trustee Gonzalez has been very focused on asking us to think more broadly about how we measure success and how we monitor how well we're doing. We have a very established, broad metric system that is detailed and very quantitative. What we've done with Trustee Gonzalez's input is look at a couple of dynamics that are more qualitative and measured. What happens when you think about the qualitative aspects of performance? And then we hope that we can couple the way we look at our quantitative program and bring in the quantitative dimensions that Trustee Gonzalez has suggested, and really have a more broad way to look and manage the business. We did it through two avenues. In one instance, Trustee Gonzalez sent us an independent article that had multiple considerations about things you need to do in managing through crises and business continuity. And then additionally, we partnered with Scott Madden, who works on our quantitative program, and asked us to help us put some additional views about business continuity in metrics that align to our pillars. And so today, you're going to hear from a wide range of leaders who continue to think about how do we maintain operations even as we face many, many challenges, and so do our customers. And we hope to show you what the direction that we're going. Hopefully, you can get a sense of what you think is helpful and give us some feedback. And we will continue these conversations, again, going forward into the future and look at ways to making it better. Item Number 8 is a special section. We have a special guest. Dan Ochenbach has a service, a business, that looks at businesses and helps them think about effectiveness, benchmarking themselves kind of in a more qualitative way, and looking at the risk prism that many municipal utilities in particular have to look through. And he worked many years for Moody's and was our senior analyst for Moody's, very familiar with our credit, very familiar with credits across the national industry for municipal energy, and now is taking that experience and providing some consulting insights about how do you blend this all together? How do you look at it? And how do you look at some of these risks relative to investors that buy your bonds, that support your business, and ensure that you can keep your capital campaigns going? So Dan will be joining us and leading the discussion. It'll be introduced by Corey Kaczynski, who heads up our risk program and our pricing program, but he's going to focus on risk today. And after Dan finishes, we're going to ask Chris Yuckster, Dr. Yuckster, to come to the table and take some of the insights that Dan has shared with us and put them in prisms of things that we've done, things that we're interested in doing, and just kind of pulling it all together. All of our parties here, Dr. Yuckster, Dan Ochenbach, Corey, and even myself, are available if there are any questions at this time. Again, though, these materials are provided to you, and we can continue to have conversations about them into the future. So there's a lot of discussion that's going to happen today. We look forward to the engagement with you, and again, the perspectives that you would like to share, and again, the ongoing conversations that we can have at the board table and through your committees. And those are my comments, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gold Williams. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a special meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees convening as the Risk Management Committee, and we're now going to go ahead, go forward with the Risk Management Committee. And I want to segue by turning the meeting over to Dr. Mackey, who's the chair of that committee. Dr. Mackey, take it away.
Thank you Chair Steen. Hello to everyone. At this time, we would like to proceed to the item Number 7, the Business Continuity and Crisis Metrics, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Vivian.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. I'm very happy to introduce this topic to you. Building on what our President and CEO, Paula Gold Williams, has already said, we will be focusing this section on two areas of concern, primarily our business continuity and crisis metrics. As you know, this pandemic is an ever-evolving, highly dynamic situation, but it does also present us with a unique opportunity to look at business continuity and crisis metrics in a different way. So as a result, in this section, what will happen is I will turn it over to our President and CEO to provide us with an introduction. We will have Scott Madden talk to us about, provide us with some industry insights and what framework we use and the approach we use to structure both business continuity and the crisis metrics. And then we'll have Shannon Ramirez, who is going to walk us through how we have both looked at those metrics, refined them, and done a self-assessment against those metrics qualitatively to see how we measure. And we try to take a critical approach in doing so, and so you will see the results of that conversation. Then we will move over to the crisis metrics framework and that self-assessment. Mahdi Waymoth will introduce that segment for us, but each of the chiefs, the managements, will then go ahead and provide a self-assessment against that. Again, I want to underscore that these metrics are complementary to our overall corporate metrics. Those do not change. These are just looking at this from the lens that the board has asked us to do so, which is quite appropriate, and we have done so. So with that, I will turn it over to our President and CEO, Paula Gold Williams.
Thank you, Vivian. And so you heard the overview from my section, and Vivian has walked us through the flow. I just want to highlight again, what we've done is look at the business continuity aspect of how we operate. We've had a business continuity program for years. It is under Fred Bonnewell in the Security, Safety, and Business Solutions area. He has an integrated safety, excuse me, and security executive. The integrated security executive is Hannah Ramirez, and her organization has been monitoring business continuity and helping us think through this. And she does it through the effort of looking through their business area, but then all of Fred's area helps us through desktop, tabletop exercises, helps us organize through looking at participations with NERC and exercises that they have. And just continually, every year, they're looking for ways for us to be better. How can we improve? How can we improve the way we respond in the case of crisis to keep our businesses continuing? Again, though, when Trustee Gonzalez sent us that article, we said, hey, this is a different way to kind of look at how we're doing it qualitatively. What can we take? How prepared are we? There aren't any numbers in this analysis. That's not what this is about. It's more about being intellectually self-critical about how we approach work. But we wanted to take it further. So the second part, again, that Scott Madden helped us with that will occur after Shannon talks, that second part, Scott Madden said they understood, they understand the industry very well. They're industry experts. They benchmark, study, evaluate, and help businesses strategize, both IOUs and public power. And knowing that, understanding the pillars that the board has overseen the development of, we have the six pillars, safety, security, resilience, reliability, customer affordability, and the environment, realizing that Scott Madden helped us talk through how can we look at how we function in every aspect of our business. In this case, you're going to hear from every senior chief. They all worked together to look at all the metrics together, and then they took different sections, those sections that were primarily focused on what they do. But please know, they were partnering, and they were looking at the different considerations through the pillars across the organization. And so they basically still represent what the organization thinks and how we're managing, looking at a better way to perform and a qualitative way to perform. Again, this is our first stab at it. We look at it, and we're going to continue to update it year after year. And again, we'll also be bringing these back and kind of talking to you through your committees just to see if you have any other detailed feedback for us. So with that, I will conclude my comments, and Vivian, and let you kind of direct us where to go from here.
I will go ahead and turn it over to Mahdi Waymoth, and she will take us through the next section. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Committee Chair, Dr. Mackey, and trustees. At this point, we're going to be turning it over to our guest, Scott Madden, Todd Williams, who will be covering the third-party industry perspective and insight. So Todd, if you're ready, please let us know.
Great. Thank you, Mahdi. Board, I appreciate the opportunity to address you this afternoon. My name is Todd Williams. I'm a partner with Scott Madden and focused on the energy utility industry. So the issue really of what metrics should the board use to assess management's performance, it's really been a consistent discussion point until it was first asked in April this year during a personnel committee meeting. So if we clocked back to April, there was discussion in the Personnel Committee meeting around how to set the targets for the current fiscal year metrics. The assessment had been completed pre-COVID, and really, COVID-19 had just started in the United States, and many communities were in the very early days of the shelter-in-place rules. Trustee Gonzalez asked the perceptive question, and that's been gestated here. And Brad, well, given that we're in a pandemic, how do we assess management this year? And so after some discussion in that committee, Trustee Kelly and Trustee Gonzalez really charged the team with, they wanted assessment metrics that could be qualitative and not quantitative, understanding that a global pandemic is really not business-as-usual for any utility, and that not to replace the current metric system, as they really established the framework for assessing utility operation achievement. And so we went to work, and we held multiple early discussions with various executives, including the President, the CEO, the CIO, strategy leaders in business planning, and others, to really discuss how to design this set of metrics under a pandemic. The decision to use the current strategic framework was really straightforward. It addressed the most important areas of any utility operations, whether in normal operations or in crisis mode. And Paula just walked you through the strategic pillars. I personally looked around at other utilities to find out who was thinking about governance and frameworks for evaluation of effectiveness, of planning and response in this crisis. I polled my fellow partners. I reviewed association and other thought leaders. I talked to other clients who are executives in utilities, and found out that really, at that point, early on, almost no one was really looking at this. Majority of our utility clients were thinking operationally and what to do in the now and what to do in the midterm, and not focused on kind of this governance piece of how to assess the overall picture. One utility executive told me quite frankly that he's a deep Southerner, so I won't do the drawl, but he said it's hard to focus on draining the swamp when you're up to your ankles in alligators. And really, what he meant was, it's really hard to take a strategic view when you're really focused on getting through the crisis, what's the immediate next step. So really found that CPS was in the vanguard. So really, what you had to do, what we had to do, is when you find yourself in the vanguard, is really pick the best approach and go with it until we see a better way or a more compelling argument. And so we selected an approach that I'll call GQM, which really stands for Goal, Questions, and Metrics. And so we used the GQM approach to help develop the crisis metrics. Step one, goal, really was around establishing what's the goal for each pillar of the strategic framework. And so for reliability, we stated the goal is keep the lights on and the gas flowing. That seemed very appropriate in a pandemic world. Step two, the questions, we developed a set of questions to help us define what good looks like in achieving each of the goals that were set. So for example, the reliability goal, we asked questions like, do we have the people in place to run the assets? Are we maintaining the assets appropriately, aka asset health? Are we meeting our reliability objectives in a cost-effective manner? Is our supply chain secure and stable? And are we minimizing risk? And step three, the M, again, stands for metrics, we then answered each of these questions with a set of specific qualitative metrics. Quantitative metrics posed a challenge, as the pandemic really was what we would call a blue ocean set of circumstances, meaning nobody sailed those waters before that we knew of. So for example, for reliability, we established five metrics. So for example, for reliability, we established five metrics. The first was maintain needed staffing levels with healthy employees. Number two was isolate known or suspected outbreaks. Number three is create a sequestration program. Four was informed decision-making, use cost versus benefit analysis during the pandemic. And finally, reinforce core business functions while minimizing risk. So the GQM framework, when applied to the strategic pillars, really allowed us to establish the metrics that the senior executives are going to walk you through later in this session. And I'll note that while CPS was early out of the gate in looking at governance frameworks, that other utilities and organizations such as EEI, Edison Electric Institute, and others have since published thoughtware in this particular arena. So we were able to incorporate their ideas, because we were still fluid in the process, and really incorporate the best of the ideas into the existing CPS Energy framework. And then while acknowledging my bias as a part author, I believe that the resulting framework that you're going to be walked through today is really a top-quality product, and that it's going to help the board not only understand the broad landscape of what has been done to ensure an appropriate operational response, but also serve as really a continuing measure stick, measuring stick to assess progress in the future. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Vivian.
Thank you, Todd. I appreciate it. At this point, we will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Shanna Ramirez, who will introduce herself. I do want to direct the board to the pages that we are now going to be referencing, and we are down to page seven in your packet. Shanna? I apologize, page six in your packet. Shanna, please.
Thank you, Vivian. My name is Shanna Ramirez, and I am your Vice President of Integrated Security and Chief Integrated Security Officer. A good afternoon, committee chair Mackey, and to all of our trustees. It's a pleasure to speak with you today about our incident response and business continuity program. As Vivian mentioned, we're on PDF slide six, and this is a July 24th board communication that you all have already received, so it will look familiar. I'm just going to do a real quick refresher of that communication. Trustee Gonzalez sent us an article entitled, "15 Business Continuity Metrics You Should Be Using." It was a fantastic article, and after reviewing it, we completed a qualitative self-assessment showing how our incident response and business continuity program compared to those 15 business continuity metrics or best practices identified. And the approach we took in the business continuity area for these ratings, as I said, is qualitative. It's a self-assessment, but it really did focus on four areas. Did we have the metric? Did we utilize that best practice? What was the maturity of the practice? How did we perform in that area as an enterprise generally? And then how have we been performing during this crisis specifically? If you could go to PDF seven, you'll see that the assessment included an executive summary of sorts, really showing how close our alignment at CPS Energy was to those best practices. We took the 15 best practices, and after looking at how they applied to us specifically, we took one and broke it into two. So as you're looking at this communication, you'll notice that we have 16 best practices. And as we compared them, we saw that on 10, we were rated excellent. On four, we rated ourselves very good. On two, we rated ourselves good. And there were none that we rated ourselves fair or poor. You'll also note, as we go on, that we really tried to be self-critical here and identified areas of opportunity for improvement and focused on a plan of how we were going to close those gaps that we identified. If you could turn to PDF eight. Because you've seen these before, I am not going to go through every single one. I'm going to focus on some areas I wanted to highlight for you. The first is number one, senior management support. This really was a critical practice for us. It was regular outreach by our CEO and all of our senior chiefs. It was really the mechanism that enabled our success. It was a connection from, all the way from our senior leaders down to the frontline workers. And that was really the critical piece that enabled us to focus on that continual improvement and keep those key revisions that we were identifying as a top priority for the organization. The next thing I want to look at is policies and standards. Here, we were very much ahead of the game, because we had already created a specific pandemic plan. We had the health event and continuity of operations plan in place and completed. This made us much better prepared to watch the global situation early and respond very thoughtfully as it started to approach CPS Energy. The next area I wanted to point out was the program metrics. And here, I'm just showing you, this happens to be the metric that we broke into two pieces for analysis at CPS Energy. We separated it out into two distinct areas. One was the Enterprise Performance Metrics, which is a very mature program that really has been in place for quite a long time and has a very set quantitative metrics that we apply across the board. The second is our Business Continuity Program, and that really is a set of metrics that are applied to the Business Continuity Program itself. If we could turn to PDF page nine. On this page, I really wanted to highlight two areas that were really great success for us. Number nine was the Crisis Management Team. Because of the unique situation and duration of this event, what we did was take our Crisis Management Team, and we created the Enterprise Risk Program. It is the Crisis Management Team, but specific for a COVID-19 response. That team includes all of our senior chiefs, our management, and subject matter experts from all of the critical business units and support teams. This was the group that really identified key areas that we needed to be aware of, key areas to keep track that we were, keep track of and to message. And it allowed us to periodically put out preventative security awareness messages for all of the organization. If we could flick to PDF page 10. And here, I wanted to focus on a couple of, again, key areas where we really did a great job. If we look at 14, for example, alternate work strategies, this is one where I really think that we just did a fantastic job. We, early on, created blue, orange, and white teams. We will continue with the first-in, last-out physical distancing program. And what we did was take a look at, how do we modify both our corporate environment and our field environment to ensure that we were limiting both exposure and risk of spread in our environment? We understood very early on that our teams needed to be able to continue to do their jobs to keep the power flowing to the rest of our community. What we have also done is developed a number of sequestration options, and we've continued to develop those options as the crisis has evolved. Unless there's any questions from the group, that is it for me, and I can turn it back over to Mahdi Sol Waymoth.
Thank you, Shanna. Good afternoon, committee chair, Dr. Mackey and trustees. My name is Mahdi Waymoth. I currently serve as the interim Vice President of Enterprise Planning and Execution. In part, my team serves to support the Enterprise Metric Program. Today, I'll be covering, in your slide deck, pages number 11, 12, and 13. I will start with 11 and 12. In alignment with the Business Continuity Program, which Shanna just covered, in particular with 3A, which is page eight, of our enterprise program metrics, there are two components. As we first started, CPS Energy currently is maintaining our comprehensive accountability metric program, which are the quantitative metrics that we've been maintaining for years. We are now expanding our performance assessment and are proposing a crisis metric framework and self-assessment, which serves as a qualitative measure of our performance during this current COVID environment. Our crisis metric framework, designed in partnership with Scott Madden, has the objective of assessing CPS Energy's operations in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and potentially all future business crisis events. As part of this crisis metric framework design, the guiding pillars were incorporated to ensure we continue to deliver value to our customers, our employees, and our community. The pillars include reliability, customer affordability, security and safety, environmental responsibility, resiliency in enterprise and operation, and also operating financially responsible. We also incorporated two additional critical business continuity categories, which include media strategy and local business advocacy. If you will direct yourself now to page 13 of the packet, before I turn it over to our senior chiefs to cover our respective crisis metrics and self-assessment, I would like to provide an overview of our self-assessment of the crisis program. Overall, two out of the 10 crisis metrics were assessed as excellent. Six were very good, and two as good. Next, I'll turn it over to our senior chief, starting with Chief Operation Officer, Dr. Chris Yuxter, who will be covering the reliability crisis metric. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mahdi. I'm going to cover the reliability metric, and our self-assessment for reliability is that we're in very good shape in terms of staffing levels, isolating outbreaks, being able to sequester resources if needed, our decision-making, and the focus on our core business. So some of the things that we've done to achieve this is, we've optimized our crew structures, we've restricted access to control rooms, we have relief crews that are available to step in at any time, and we have an absenteeism reporting dashboard so that we can monitor our resources on a daily basis. We've also worked with safety and health occupations and people and cultural organizations to implement social distancing, mask wearing practices and policies, daily temperature checks, and health screening assessments for employees and contractors. We've also developed a comprehensive sequestration plan, which includes onsite lodging at some of our critical facilities. We prioritized work on the distribution system, including vegetation of management to minimize safety risk and increase reliability. We are also proactively focusing on our key metrics in light of budget constraints and COVID-19 impacts. And finally, we've successfully demonstrated our ability to work remotely to support our field operations. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Customer Engagement Officer, Mr. Rudy Garza.
Good afternoon, trustees. If you will join me on PDF page 15, I'm going to cover today the guiding pillar and goal of customer affordability. When we assess ourselves as relates to this business continuity event goal, we've rated ourselves excellent on a number of fronts. CPS Energy has been thinking about the potential effects of a pandemic since late last year. As Fred Bonnewell, my colleague, mentioned earlier, we were the first ones in as it relates to our response, and that included thinking about our response from the lens of the customer. Nobody asked us or mandated that we implement a disconnect moratorium. We were one of the first utilities in the country, in fact, to recognize the impact that the pandemic was going to have on our customers, and we took the concern of disconnection off the table, recognizing that as the pandemic, you know, grew and the effects got worse, the impact on our customers' ability to pay their bill, you know, was going to be potentially a significant event for our customers. So when you think about why we have been so active in the media over the last six months, the primary driver of that particular strategy has been outreach to our customers. Our president and CEO, Paula Gold Williams, was very, very focused, and we have been focused as a leadership team, on ensuring that we've tried to proactively engage our customers every step of the way. So letting them know that they weren't going to have to worry about disconnects, letting our customers know how they could get in touch with us to gain access to potential assistance, standing up our customer outreach and resource efforts, which is our proactive call process, that now we have been able to reach 22,000 customers and put, and connect with over half of those customers, and put many of those customers on assistance programs and offer payment plans if they were interested. All speak to, you know, how we kind of arrived at this self-assessment, and those efforts have continued. We've communicated with customers in English and Spanish. We've thought through the diversity of our customers with respect to residential. You know, our small business customers certainly are impacted through this time as well. So when you look at how we have gone about mitigating the potential impacts to our customers, it really, the story comes down to trying every way we can think of to connect with our customers in some meaningful way and make it easy for them to not only find the assistance that we have to offer, but also to connect them with our community partners across the San Antonio and Bear County metropolitan areas to ensure that they know where to go to find the assistance that they may need. So at the end of the day, that is the story with respect to our customer affordability goal. And I will now turn it over to my colleague, Fred Bonnewell, to discuss security.
Thank you, Rudy. Good afternoon, committee chair, Dr. Mackey, and board of trustees. I'll be covering slides 16 through 18, and I'll start on 16 with respect to security. Overall, with regard to security and safety relative to our self-assessment, we've identified our performance so far to be very good. But let me just point out a couple of things. I want to paint you the picture of how challenging this has really been for us. Most of our experiences in our lifetime and in the utility industry are usually marked by some predetermined path that somebody has already gone down. And so there's training, or there's information available. In this case, there was none. So there were no training wheels. We had to invent the training wheels to be effective. So back in 2014, Paula Gold Williams, who was the CFO at that time, she relegated a team to start looking at crisis management as a whole. And so as a result of the West African Ebola virus epidemic, we started proactively looking at this and holding tabletop exercises way in advance. So it started to get our company relegated to the idea that this could in fact happen. And in my opinion, this is one of the key things that have enabled us to be effective so far through this pandemic, is we've been able to test those things out prior to the advent of COVID-19. Today, we stand at 106 positive cases with 40 employees in quarantine, and that is far less than a 10% benchmark in our industry, where most utilities have faced so far. Most of those infections occurred in June and July. Relative to security, we've seen a huge exponential threat landscape occur as a result of nation-state utilities, nation-state actors trying to take advantage of utilities that are distracted from their business in hopes that they can gain access to the grid. So far, they have not been successful relative to that with CPS Energy or the community that we've served. I'll point out the fact that Shanna Ramirez and her team have worked tirelessly, many times 24/7, with the exponential threats that we've seen from cybersecurity. And in fact, one of the key things was, they hired one of the best defensive cyber experts in the DoD, in the Navy, who had previous responsibility for cyber defense from the Asia corridor all the way to the western part of the United States for the United States Navy. So this has been very effective. We've been able to maintain our partnerships through COVID, through the Department of Defense and Joint Base San Antonio, all the way through, working on critical grid projects to maintain the resiliency to our customers and the public that we serve. If you'll move to the next slide, please. We're going to focus on slide 17, which is safety. So I'd like to point out a couple of things here. First of all, we took advantage of First of all, we took advantage of the overall landscape. So as we approached this COVID-19 challenge, we looked at the overall landscape of the impact that this was having on us and looked at everything in totality. And I will point out the fact that we reached to retirees with occupational health experience in our company who came in and supported us. Now we have over 110 full-time nurses taking temperature checks at all of our critical locations. And this has been effective in making sure we have a handle on the workforce and their situation. We've been able to reach out to American Public Power, Edison Electric Institute, the Denton's Law Firm has also been effective. And most importantly, locally, the Bear County Health Department has been also very effective in helping us pave the way so far. I'll also point out the fact that since February, through Paula's leadership and through the CEO of EpiCenter, Kimberly Britton, we have held continuous meetings with the Texas Public Power Council that has included New Braunfels Utilities, Austin Energy, and the Lower Colorado River Authority to make sure that we're up to date with each other on everything we need to know on how to be effective through this pandemic. And more importantly, we know that we're in the middle of hurricane season, one of the worst hurricane seasons we've seen thus far with a category two that just hit today in Alabama. But we know that we have to support each other up and down the I-35 corridor, and so we're ready to do that. We are not anxious to go anywhere else but support our state of Texas and the grid that we serve here, in our community and through the state, in ERCOT. So we've maintained this continuity with them every other week. I sit on that committee with Paula and we meet every other Friday. So it's through these partnerships and through our focus on people first that has enabled us so far to meet this challenge. And one of the silver linings with safety has been so far, our tier-one metric is very favorable, which I think has been an attribute towards the increased focus that we have in making sure that our employees stay safe, they're covered, they're working at a safe distance from each other, and we're strategic about how we are executing the work every day. And I'll point out the fact that in gas department, gas solutions area, which I'm responsible for, we have taken a step further to ensure that when we go into the customers' homes to support them for a gas leak or a gas issue, that we're fully protected. And we did that through a training video with Paula and all of our gas troubleshooters, of which there's over 30 of those folks. We've only had to go into a couple of homes since the advent of the pandemic, but we've been effective every time, making sure that all of our employees were entitled as essential to support this pandemic. This was critical. Moreover, I think, what do we look forward to? What are the continued challenges? The continued challenges are there's no vaccine. Our employees are working tirelessly 24/7 through this intense heat, staying covered and staying focused and vigilant in keeping safety first and foremost at the top of mind. So we've got to continue this. Now we're headed into the colder season with the regular flu upon us, so we still have to remain vigilant. We still have to remain focused. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to be the last company to go back into the regular mode of operation. And so we've held over 50 meetings together, the ERP meetings that Shanna referred to, with Paula leading us and Frank Almerez as my cohort in this process. So now I'll turn the next segment over to Frank to speak about his areas. Frank?
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, trustees, for this opportunity to be with you. I have two metrics that I'm going to talk about. The first is found on page 19, and it is environmental responsibility. And ultimately, this is our ability to maintain the existing environmental program and our regulatory partnerships, and we rated ourselves as very good. The agencies that we work with are adapting just like we all were along the same timeframe. And we maintain a consistent contact with those agencies and our contacts there with whom we have longstanding, solid working relationships over many years. And that served us well as we transitioned to phone and video conference as a primary mode of communication. As an example of that, we had a NERC audit this year, which is our periodic, really significant, big work effort audit with NERC. And two weeks of that that would have normally been spent with auditors here on site, that was done remotely via WebEx. Similarly, we used, just another example, we used a laptop to do a TCEQ wastewater inspection where our technician literally used the camera on the laptop to demonstrate our compliance to a regulator. So we're adapting in there, too. We've had zero compliance events that are identified resulting from COVID-19, though we know that distraction, when we have such important things happening around us that cause us to be thoughtful about our families and about our community and our businesses and our own safety, it's critical that we remain focused on the important task at hand. And we've doubled down on our controls and our processes to be sure that we are meeting our obligations. And with that in mind, we've had, through year-to-date July, we've had no tier-one or two, two environmental compliance metrics there on track as of July year-to-date. I'll move next to the next metric, which is, it's on slide 20 but extends into slide This is the enterprise resiliency, and it's different than the one that Chris Yuchter mentioned, and that was really sort of an operational resiliency measure. And this is more about how we as an organization and our management team and our executive leaders and our broad team of 3,100-plus employees serving this community came together and used our business continuity to adapt as the global pandemic conditions evolved earlier this year. It really was an all-hands-on-deck effort, and I can't stress that enough. As we evolved from the early going where we were focused on social distancing to the development of the white, orange, and blue teams that allowed us to move most of our employees or half of our employees out of their usual work environments to make room for our essential workers that have to be here every single day to operate more safely, to create social distance. We simultaneously had to think about what happens if things get a lot worse, as they did in other communities across the country. And we developed a sequestration plan that would protect our essential workers, those that have to, you know, operate highly skilled and sensitive parts of our system. And at the same time, we thought about what we're going to do when we come back to work. We will come back, you know, first in, first out, last in, but we all have a belief that at some date, we're going to be back in the workplace, though we don't know when that date will be now. And so we have to design processes that allow us to, you know, be together and work together with the learnings of the pandemic in mind. And all of that was with an eye towards supporting our essential workers, our blue team, which is once again, half of our workforce, as they supply powering gas to all of our community at a time when it would be very difficult for our community to be without it. So we rated ourselves an excellent on this front. And I'll try not to read this to you, but we activated the ERP team, and Shanna Ramirez spoke a little bit about this, but that was led by our senior leaders. It was chaired by our CEO, Paula Gold Williams, and administratively led by a couple of the senior chiefs, Fred Bonwell and myself, along with the full support and engagement of the balance of that team and the rest of our senior leaders. We learned from invited guests about a bunch of different topics, including transmission, as we learned more about how the virus was spread. We had regular updates on that. We learned about testing and what, you know, how you can use those testing protocols to develop our return to work. And finally, vaccine development and monitoring that and trying to understand what the outlook is for the community recovery, flattening the curve, spread in respect to that forecast and what a vaccine would mean to all of that. Now, more than ever, we've had to double down on our people-first communication. And Paula has done a wonderful job of personally keeping the organization informed from senior leaders to video messages all the way down to the workforce. And that is not just to tell them about what's going on, but also to make sure that everyone is clear on expectations of adopting and really living up to our health and safety policy to keep each other and our community safe. We increased our focus on mental and physical well-being and really have adapted our communication to make sure that we're covering that. And we've made some real-time adaptations to our own practices in order to try and accommodate and adapt to this new phenomenon. We developed family work streams, as I mentioned, and these were led by separate executives with separate focuses. On the one hand, developing that detailed sequestration plan, and then on the other hand, how we're going to come back to work and incorporation of those learnings into our process to come back at some modest amounts to the workplace and what that looks like in the context of our new buildings at McCullough. We've supported our employees during this pandemic. As our employees have to support our community, we have to support them. And we've, at a time when there was scarcity of basic staples, grocery staples at the grocery stores, we were able to make grocery services available to them. We were using electrostatic cleaning methods before most people had ever heard of it and making sure that the areas that really need to be kept safe for our employees were made safe. We developed practices and policies and guidance and communication that supported all of that, including our employee screening process, our contact tracing, an enormous effort by a handful of our team that was working seven days a week, early morning to late night, to understand what exposures were possible in our workforce to keep people safe. We developed the health and safety policy, as I mentioned. We developed the telecommuting, expanded our telecommuting program. We developed in short order, under Vivian Buehle's leadership, a tool that would allow us to capture and track absenteeism related to the pandemic and have visibility to it to gain deeper insight into how we need to adapt our operations and manage through it. I did it in very short order. And we facilitated effective enterprise change management and people readiness in support of the key activities that we had going on around all of that adaptation. And once again, a full-court press by a cast of many, many people to whom I'm all grateful. And that was what underpinned our rating of excellent on that one. Now I'm going to hand it over to Chris and to Carolyn to move us forward to resiliency operations.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. And we're going to talk about resiliency of operations, and I'm going to share this update with Carolyn Schellman, our Chief Legal Officer and General Counsel. If you get to go to PDF page 22, our self-assessment on this is very good. It's really our ability to withstand and recover rapidly from any kind of disruptions to operations, including to withstand and recover from deliberate attacks, accidents, or naturally occurring threats or incidences. Some of the things that we've done to mitigate this risk is to complete daily checks and testing of critical operational systems. We've established, and I talked a little bit about this previously, isolated control centers that provide flexibility and prevent single-point failures. In fact, we've got multiple of these isolated control centers that support our operations so we can be flexible and we can pivot to different centers if we need to. We've maintained full compliance with ERCOT protocols and respective generation scheduling and energy delivery, and we participated in mutual assistance planning efforts both kind of nationally as well as regionally. I think Fred talked a little bit about what we've done here regionally. But we have, we are part of the leadership group with our mutual assistance with the APPA, which is the American Public Power Association. And we also work with the Texas Mutual Assistance Group here as well. So if anything does happen, we're in a position where we could help each other. And with that, let me turn it over to Carolyn to cover the other part of this metric.
Thank you, Chris. Also on page 22, the last two bullets there are the ones that reflect what my group has been doing to support the rest of the organization and make sure that we're protecting all the things that we need to do to operate. And I want to just give you, instead of just discussing those two, I just want to give you five quick examples of the kinds of things we've done, in part because what it demonstrates is that this, as you think back, this has been a really fast-moving, changing environment. And it involves not only all the people locally, but our state and federal governments as well. So the first thing that I would mention is that when we were still, we were making our plans to stop working and send our employees home, the city had, and county had issued an emergency shelter-in-place declaration, and we were scrambling around saying, what are we going to do? We've got employees, if we send them home, we've got to be able to let them drive out on the streets and go to work and go and repair facilities for our system. And so we needed to make sure that it was clear that we were deemed mission critical. So that was just a simple coordination that seems so obvious right now, but at the very beginning, that's at the level we were. How do we designate our people as mission critical so they can keep doing their work? We also have been in continuous monitoring mode to make sure that the governor's emergency declaration that allows us to have board meetings and committee meetings by telephone conference continues. We don't have that right under the statute, and it would have been impossible for us to meet if we had not had that emergency declaration in place. So long as he continues renewing it, we will be able to continue doing this. But this is a constant monitoring that we're doing, staying in touch with the governor's office so that they understand how important this is to us. We have also advocated, along with the city, we've worked very closely with them, to get federal relief for customers who can't pay their bills. We want to make sure that to the extent there is, there are dollars coming from any source to the city, that we can use it for our customers who can't pay their bills so that they will continue to have all the things they need to survive. We have, I'm going to give a personal example, but I'm involved in the LPPC, Large Public Power Council, General Counsel Group. And we meet fairly regularly. We have had weekly meetings, which are now being spaced out a little bit, by telephone, to discuss everything that all the large public power utilities are doing across the country. It's been extremely helpful. We could share, I shared with them things we were doing. We learned a lot of valuable information from them about those utilities that have already sequestered employees. How did they do it? What were the legal problems they had? What were the policy issues they dealt with? And I know a lot of people at CPS Energy were involved in similar types of meetings, and our local and government and federal and state relations group was very actively involved in things like that. And then finally, we continue to watch for and advocate that if and when there is a vaccine, we want to make sure that our employees, who are so critical to the operation of our utility, are in line to be able to have access to it. So this is just an ongoing issue that we deal with, and we've done it well. We consider that we've done We consider that we've done it very good, but there's always room for improvement. And at that, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary, who can talk about that, how we have been financially responsible.
Thank you, Carolyn. And as Carolyn noted, I'm going to be talking about the pillar of financial responsibility and some of the actions that we took as we saw the pandemic approaching. And one of the first things that I would say is that, you know, we were really thoughtful and proactive as, as we began thinking through this process. And we wanted to be sure that we focused on the impact that this was going to have on our customers. We, we knew that there would, would be an impact, you know, across all of our customers. And so we began a process of looking at projections, revising projections on our forecasts for our sales and revenues. We took a, we took a conservative approach, but with, but a thoughtful approach, as I mentioned. As we looked at revenues, we also wanted to be sure that we thought about the impact to our customers. And I know both Rudy and Carolyn talked about our customers' ability to pay. And we knew that this was going to be an impact to us from a cash perspective. We wanted to closely monitor what was happening with our incoming cash. We need to be thinking about how we use cash in, in forms of our working capital for items such as inventory and prepayments and paying our vendors. We wanted to ensure that we continued to pay our vendors timely. It was important for us to make sure that we supported business operations. And so we had to think about all of those as, as we put together this plan of what our financial impacts would be. At the same time, we started to, to think about where did we have opportunities to look at reducing costs? We worked across the organization. And as we've noted in, in some, in previous meetings, we've taken initiatives such as a hiring freeze and suspension of our EIP. And we looked at all of our projects and where it makes sense that we can delay or defer projects that don't create significant risks. We've done that. And all of those are designed to help offset the impact that we saw as a result of changes in our, in our revenue projections. We also, knowing that there would be a liquidity impact, we also looked at alternative forms of liquidity. Initially, when the pandemic began, the financial markets, there were some challenges with, within the financial markets as they, as they froze up temporarily and liquidity was more expensive. But we've been able to work through that. We have not had to utilize those forms of liquidity, but we have them in place should we see something happen again in the financial markets in the future. We began a proactive outreach, working with the rating agencies. Early on, when the pandemic was starting, all of the leaders of the organizations were on, on calls with the, the rating agencies, talking about not only what we saw financially, but answering questions for the rating agencies about our ability to maintain ongoing operations. And we found those conversations to, to be very beneficial. Overall, we, we rated ourselves as good, primarily because we still don't really know the full impacts, the full financial impacts from this pandemic. There's a, there's always a lagging effect to events like that. And we expect those lagging effects are still going to be coming forward in the future. And so we can't fully assess what the, the true financial impact is going to be. And so that is the, the reason behind our, our, our good rating. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Rudy Garza.
Well, thanks for allowing me, back trustees, to talk to you about goals that aren't necessarily guiding pillars in their own right, but they're sprinkled across many guiding pillars when you think about, you know, the effects of, of these goals on, you know, what customers think of our performance from a reliability standpoint, from an affordability standpoint, from a resiliency standpoint. And if you'll join me on page 25, our media strategy has been more robust this year, without a doubt. Our overall approach to, to our message in the community is that, you know, our, our employees latched on to, you know, the concept that we've got your back, San Antonio. Our customers need to know that we're going to continue to operate in the manner they expect us to operate. And, and when you can't be out in the community the way you, that we're used to be in with the multiple events that we, that we collaborate with council members on, with our chamber partners, multiple stakeholders, you have to find ways to get that message to your customers to ensure that they know you're going to be there when they need you the most. Imagine, you know, all the children in our community who are at home, you know, doing schoolwork without electricity, you know? So, so we've got an obligation that our employees take very, very seriously. And so the efforts to, to really hit our messaging on all fronts, in the newspapers, certainly, we have done commercials in the media that have been modest buys, but buys that have allowed us to reinforce the, the message that, that, you know, that, that we are going to be here and, and with our customers, you know, during this time. You know, I talked earlier about making sure that we reinforce the message regarding how you can get ahold of us to get the, the assistance opportunities that are available to you. All of those, you know, messages, right down to, you know, in the summer months, we have seen a huge uptick over the summer months and imposter calls to our customers. We, we had 100 imposter calls on Monday alone of folks trying to take advantage of our customers. And all of that requires consistent messaging to our community on the things that CPS Energy is focused on. So our, our strategy has been more robust this year. It's needed to be more robust, you know, to make sure that our customers understand that, that, that we're going to be here to support them in every way possible. Again, we've done Facebook Live events. We've had, you know, trustee Gonzalez has participated in a number of small business-focused events that, to help make sure that, that our small business community, you know, gets the messaging, which, which takes me to the last item on my list, which is on page number 26, local business advocacy. And I apologize, the assessment on our media strategy has been, you know, very good. You know, we have done more this year than we have in previous, in, in past years. There's always more that we can do. You know, maybe some folks think we might need to do a little less, but, but being self-critical, there, there's always new ways we can connect with our customers. So we, we assess ourselves very good in that regard. On local business advocacy, we can do more. The assessment of ourselves in this regard is good. We have a lot of opportunity, information we've gathered from our customers that has told us that we need to think more broadly about the, the products and services that we have available for our small business customers. We have been very focused this year on, on pairing available assistance through the CARE Act and through various community partnerships that we've got across San Antonio to connect our small business customers with the opportunity for assistance to ensure that we help, we're helping them keep their doors, doors open. We've done that in both English and Spanish as well. And our outbound call efforts, again, have, have been specifically focused, we, we've got a group that's specifically focused on small business outreach. So we've got work to do as we move forward in how we are reaching out to our, to our local business community, but, but we are making progress and it has been a thoughtful approach during this pandemic time. I am now going to turn it over to Marty Wayman to close us out.
Thank you, Rudy. Committee Chair Dr. Mackey and trustees, that concludes our presentation on business continuity and the crisis metrics program. At this time, I will now turn it over to Committee Trustee, Committee Chair Dr. Mackey for any questions. Thank you.
At this time, I want to thank you all for a wonderful job, wonderful presentation. And I think we covered a lot in this short period of time. But at this time, I would like to ask if any, any trustee have any questions? Mr. Steen, Mr. Kelly, or Ms. Gonzalez, have any questions or comments?
No, a lot to take in. I would probably have some follow-up questions, but not at the moment.
Okay. If there's not any other questions, we would like to move on to item number eight, Investors' Perspective and Challenges of a Changing Industrial. And our sponsor of this is Corey Chacinski, Chacinski and Dr. Chris Euster.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. Appreciate that. And hello, trustees. Pleasure to be with you this afternoon. For the purposes of this presentation, title page begins on PDF page 29, and the objectives are on page 30. And what I wanted to do was do a little bit of a setup to, to add to Paula's opening comments. Yeah, as you know, our industry's been going through a lot of transition. In particular, you know, we're faced with this convergence of competing interest and demands in regards to the environment, reliability, affordability, and so forth. These pressures, these are real, and in many ways, they present several of the risks that we've observed and captured in our program over the years. And even at times, some of these risks may seem discrete or stand on, stand on their own. But in reality, what we observe through our prism of risk is that many of these risks are connected and in fact, play off of each other. Related, you know, this transition to a cleaner grid and cleaner generation, it's been driving innovation for years. And, you know, we think, you know, our flex path and our strategies are, are a way to address these, these competing risks. And so as we think about our risks and as we think about managing those risks, Paula and, and our leadership team, you know, they continue to view this broader risk landscape and they're always looking for these connections and alignment to strategy. And, and to that point, as Paula alluded to, we have a special presentation today for the Risk Committee in the form of our guest speaker, Dan Asherbach. And I'll formally introduce him in just a few minutes. But, but as Paula said, Dan brings years of experience and a wealth of information about the industry and about the players in our industry and the challenges that, that we all face. And as Paula alluded to as well, after following Dan's presentation, we'll briefly turn it over to Dr. Chris Euster for some initial observations and insights relative to that discussion. So with that, as kind of a background, you know, on slide 30, I have a note there, you know, I'll take a few more minutes again, just to refresh on our dimensions of the risk program. And then, like I said, introduce Dan for that focused discussion. So on slide 31 for our agenda, noted, I'll step through the risk program dimensions and then we'll, we'll go to Dan. So, okay, on slide 32, focusing on this illustration, we've used it a few times. Again, I wanted to bring it back for some context. One of the key points of, of this visual that we'd like to stress is that the Enterprise Risk Program has different dimensions. And that allows us to provide updates to the board at, at different levels of discussion. And looking top to bottom, as we, as we've seen before, we have the Risk Management Committee with the full board, where, and we meet twice a year. And then that is what today's meeting is. It'll be very strategic in its discussion and content. And then moving down, you know, we have our alignment committee. We'll reuse that as an opportunity to take deeper dives into the risks that align with that particular committee. Okay. Slide 33, as I mentioned earlier, Paula and her leadership team are constantly looking at this broader risk landscape and looking for these connections and alignment to strategy. Of course, we recognize that it's important to manage risk appropriately. However, I think by the way they, they look, they view at these convergence of risks, I mean, look at them in the context of strategic industry transitions, it really helps the leadership team provide an edge to the decision-making that they do. And so it's through that prism of viewing risk that we've asked Dan Asherbach to be here today. And with that, I'll turn your attention to PDF 34, to give a quick intro of, of Dan. So, beginning in 2019, last year, Dan began AGVP Advisors, which is, as Paula went to, a risk assessment consulting firm focused, of course, on public finance and electric utilities. Became a member of the Municipal Analyst Group of New York and was elected this year to the Board of Governors of the National Federation of Municipal Analysts. But prior to that, as, as was mentioned earlier, he was a senior VP at Moody's Investor Services. And that is potentially where some of you may recognize his name. There, he, he led the Public Power Electric Utility Ratings Team for a number of years and gained an incredible amount of knowledge and insight through that role. Dan's also very involved. He served 18 years on the Cranford, New Jersey Governing Board and four terms as mayor. And that is where Dan is residing and calling in from today. And with that introduction, Dan, I'd like to turn it over to you on PDF 35 for your comments and slides.
Thank you very much, Corey. I appreciate the invitation to speak to the board today. I, I wanted to, I have a slide here on, on number 36, just on my firm. I, I left Moody's a year ago and after 36 years. Many of those years, I did visit San Antonio as part of being the lead analyst for, for the credit. So I became very familiar with, with CPS Energy as part of my, my role at Moody's. And I moved off, I created my own firm. It seemed like a long time being in one place, so I created my own firm and I'm doing these types of risk assessments now across the country on different utilities. So my, my agenda today is page 38, that, I wanted to start off with a concept that is evolving, ESG. It's an evolving assessment tool for investors. I also wanted to talk a little bit about reliable, clean energy and its environmental cost governance and management challenges. And then to talk directly about some industry transition risks that are front and center. So on the next slide, well, ESG involving risk assessment tool. To define that a little bit on page 30, on slide 40, ESG is a different lens for assessment. Rather than just looking at investment return or credit ratings, investors are increasingly interested in environmental, social, and governance ESG factors that shape a utility. It's, it has been around for a little while, primarily globally, and has moved into the U.S. with, with quite a bit of interest from investors in, and slide 37, I'm sorry, 41. It's got to the point now where major investor-owned utilities are reporting their ESG assessments to their boards and is, is a important ingredient in decision-making, evaluating the environmental factors that might affect the utility, social issues as well as governance. Rating agencies now are using ESG as a component of their work to assess risks. Each of the major agencies have their own organizations now that, that drill down into each one of those categories. Not that they weren't evaluated previously, prior to this new focus, but it, it doesn't, doesn't produce a credit rating, it produces an ESG assessment rating or grading. And it's shifting into the municipal bond sector to incorporate, incorporating ESG factors and analysis. For example, BlackRock, DWS, VanEck, Vanguard, they all have mutual funds or, or ESG, exchange traded funds that are guided by ESG principles, who's eligible. Some, some utilities can't become eligible because they're not following those standards. And that's, that's a risk that utilities are not taking on relatively new. For utilities, the heavily weighted factor of E, environment, these are some of the questions that are being posed. Again, in credit rating assessment, understanding leverage and debt service coverage and capital programs, some, most of these issues might be capital programs, some, most of these issues might be a component of that, but this is targeted and much more evolved. Uh, level of greenhouse gas emissions exposure, the tons produced. Uh, strategies to meet the UN climate change goals with net zero carbon emissions by twenty-fifty and state GHTC standards. Power plant locations and exposure to climate change impacts. Uh, life cycle, power generation, uh, air pollution exposure. Um, these are specific questions that are now, uh, posed as part of this type of assessment and, um, something that, um, again, will, is, is evolving to become more and more important as investors evaluate, um, uh, utilities or cities, uh, as an example as well. This is a busy slide. Uh, I just wanted to provide this, um, to show the importance of one important factor. Environmental factors across the globe and, uh, private sector, uh, as well as public utilities, municipal utilities, uh, they're important, very important, but, um, in the U.S. because of the, the regulations that exist and, uh, statutes and the like, we do have a fairly, uh, comprehensive, um, environmental, um, uh, regulation. Um, so, you know, compliance, it may be a cost factor, but, uh, typically it's not an unmanaged risk, um, uh, today. Um, but one of the, uh, ESG factors that's, that's cited more often than anything is governance and that's, um, an important consideration. Um, it's a critical factor in these assessments. So the next slide, forty, on page forty-four, uh, in that table that, on page forty-three, um, the, the environmental risks are important, but it's governance that makes the difference in these assessments. It's cited more often, obviously eighty-six percent of the time it's cited and I think they've tracked seven thousand, um, assessments that they've looked at. Um, and so, so, um, one thing I'd point out that one area that has, uh, has been evolving over time and becoming a larger, uh, consideration and will be more so going forward is obviously the risk of, uh, uh, climate change and carbon. And that, uh, in a more recent, um, version of this, which is online, I couldn't get the table for it, but it is a, um, that factor is now at a much greater level. Um, so, so from my own, uh, evaluation of, um, or observation of CPS for many years, um, going back, um, more than twenty years, um, as a lead analyst, um, CPS has always, um, strongly managed the environmental and social risk factors, uh, and, uh, and governance issues. Um, and, you know, again, as I point out, it is a little bit confusing because right now you know about what a credit rating is, but in that credit rating, many of these, of the ESG components are in there, um, and it's something that is evaluated and CPS Energy has always been considered, um, one of the strongest managed, uh, utilities in the United States. Um, as I said, my portfolio was North America actually and I had hundreds and hundreds of examples, um, through my work there of, um, utilities that were managing, uh, these types of factors. All this ESG assessment is now is just taking them out and putting them in a separate evaluation for, uh, investors and public to, to view, uh, and it's a, it's a, um, uh, something that again is, is gaining in, in importance. So, um, my next, uh, area of, uh, discussion here is on page forty-five. Um, in this, in looking, taking a focused look at reliable, uh, or the environmental factor, um, reliable, clean energy and its environmental cost government and management challenges is a, um, is a very key area that is more and more being focused on and it's something that I thought I'd spend some time just talking about this a little bit. Uh, as the industry evolves, uh, there are major questions that are being addressed about reliability and the cost of a clean energy grid. Uh, and then slide forty-seven, uh, kind of gets into some of these questions. Uh, getting to a reliable and clean energy grid will not be easy as some are suggesting. Um, getting to a hundred percent renewable energy, um, there are a number of things that, uh, are, are considerations that have to be, have to be part of that discussion. Uh, the full cost of transition at a fossil fuel assets, for example, um, some potential could be stranded, which is an economic cost to, to ratepayers. Um, it, it also could challenge the affordability of service to all customers. In a city like, uh, San Antonio, which has a very large, um, uh, poverty, um, percentage of, of, uh, customers, uh, this is a really important factor. Uh, affordability is, is, uh, electricity is a very fundamental part of, um, of life and having, having it out of the price range of people just, um, is, is a, is a problem. Um, reliability, uh, while ensuring management of existing extreme, uh, extreme weather and disasters and all the things that, um, residents, commerce have to put up with, um, reliability of the system is, is of fundamental, uh, importance. Um, you cannot have, uh, a system that, you know, is not, um, able to deliver on a moment's notice, um, the electricity needed. So, um, the intermittency of the solar and wind, um, energy, um, is, is an issue only in that the reliability of, of the entire grid to be able to, um, get managed in a way that provides that, uh, electricity down on a, on a, on a reliable basis, um, we're just not there yet. Uh, it's, it's something that is, is, um, uh, utilities are working at. Um, it's not that, when, you know, I hear, uh, claims to get to a hundred percent in, in five years, ten years, um, everybody that I ever talked to believes that that, uh, getting to a cleaner energy grid is the number one priority, but that doesn't throw out the need to have reliability. Um, and there are a number of approaches being, and I know CPS is leading in this direction of looking at storage, um, and, uh, changes to the energy grid that would help with that reliability, but, um, you know, the average capacity factor of a solar, um, uh, system is fifteen percent. Um, and if, if, if solar becomes a dominant fuel or, or energy source, um, if there's a problem with that energy source, the, the economy then is affected substantially. So page forty, uh, forty-eight, I think I saw it brings it home in pictures, um, and, um, so reliability, uh, to me again, is one of the most important factors going forward in this transition, uh, ensuring that that's part of the discussion, a major part of the discussion. And the picture in the center here with the operating table during COVID-nineteen process just explains this point, um, totally. Um, you know, our hospitals are so critical, essential and you cannot, um, you have to be certain that the system is going to develop, um, the, uh, in a way that will provide that reliability to the hospital, um, and to the, to the manufacturing center or to the home. Um, uh, it, it's, it's just a very, very, um, at the foundation, I think, of any moving forward, um, process. So on the, the E section, again, the next, uh, slide forty-nine, um, so the environmental question today is, um, is moving to a cleaner, uh, energy grid that is reliable and that is affordable? Uh, it means different, different timetables to everybody. Um, the Green New Deal has a conversion, um, in twenty-thirty. Um, the, uh, one congressman, um, is calling for a moonshot, uh, to be carbon neutral by twenty-forty. Uh, Vice President Biden has a plan to carbon neutral twenty-thirty-five. Um, under the president, um, President Trump's administration, there's no date given, um, but it's left to shift, the shift, um, based on economics and that shift has been from coal to natural gas. Really hasn't been through regulation, it's been largely because natural gas prices have been so low. Uh, and that has reduced the carbon output, um, globally, but it, you know, um, and what's been happening is as renewable energy becomes more, um, efficient and less costly, uh, that is now putting even more pressure on coal and other, other, uh, resources. So that's the current administration's, uh, plan. So it leads to all these questions that come up that utilities have to deal with, um, what to build or not to build. Um, so again, as I pointed out, I'll say this probably twenty times, reliability is is critical. Um, so without storage, um, what is the maximum level of solar and wind and what then gets built that meets environmental goals? Um, so for example, if solar and wind cannot get, um, there is no storage, um, no commercial storage that can, uh, correct this deficiency of, um, intermittency or of supply at times where there is not, um, solar or wind available. Um, you know, it's, you know, there, there's been enormous development in storage, but it's still at a level that is not at a point that it's a grid, uh, you have grid certainty that you can manage. Maybe that will happen in twenty-thirty, maybe it will happen twenty-thirty-five, um, but we're not there yet and I think, uh, that's something that has to be, uh, understood. Um, with a new federal administration, if it is, um, happens to be President, uh, Vice President Biden, um, regulation of carbon, uh, the timetable, uh, more than likely will speed up, uh, no question about it. Um, and as a credit analyst back when President Obama, uh, became president and established a carbon reduction plan to cap and trade and, um, you know, my role is neutral. Um, so what I, what we did was we modeled what a carbon tax would have to be and clearly those cities, those utilities that had major coal investment, uh, would have a big, uh, cost increase that, um, uh, would affect affordability. Um, and, you know, the questions about reliability, you know, that we never got there with the carbon tax, but, um, the point is that's only a couple of months away and there could very well be an impact that utilities are going to have to face. Uh, energy efficiency is clearly, um, one of the, um, most direct ways of lowering carbon because, um, you're able to, you know, not produce, uh, not require as much electricity. Uh, and CPS has done an incredible job getting to the level it's been at and I understand there's a new, uh, program to, to double that, uh, or get to a much higher level. Um, the question that is out there is how much, when, where are diminishing returns? Uh, when does that start affecting the, the rate of, um, of, uh, decrease that you can achieve? Uh, and that's a big question utilities are, are continuing to have to manage. Um, demand-side management, uh, can you achieve more certainty? Uh, I, you know, there's more being done with that, but there's barriers to that, this type of program. Um, but, you know, having the ability to reduce demand when you need to, uh, clearly could help, uh, provide, uh, that, um, that, uh, reliability. So, um, another area of questions are on page fifty-one, challenges, uh, to the road to clean energy. Um, EV demand is expected to grow, uh, in electric vehicles. Um, and that transition brings, um, harder, um, um, more questions, I guess. To convert the entire fleet of automobiles, um, equals about one point eight trillion kilowatt hours. Uh, total electricity production in the United States is now at four point four. So, uh, you'll need a significant amount of new, um, um, power source to, um, meet the EV transition. Now, if energy efficiency does help with that, that is less, but, um, that, you know, that's a, um, an order that needs to be, uh, a tall order that needs to be considered because, uh, you can't build a power plant in a day, uh, to manage that type of growth. Um, yeah, so that, that's, that's something that, you know, is, is, um, is uncertain. Um, if, if electricity production remains a fossil-based, fuel-based, then what is achieved by electrifying the vehicle fleet? Um, I live in New Jersey and I believe it's sixty percent or somewhere around fifty percent that is still coal-based and natural gas, um, and, uh, converting the fleet to EV, um, you converted, uh, the fuel that, um, or from gas, from oil to, um, another fossil fuel and it seems to be, uh, not, uh, it's just a question, it's a, it's something that has to be considered on a social basis. Uh, while wind and, uh, solar and wind can possibly meet this demand, uh, that follows the expansion path in the last decade, um, uh, it can meet the energy demand, um, but what about the capacity requirements? Uh, and that could be, um, you know, could be a stumbling block that could create the types of outages and whatnot that you would want to see. And then I think a bigger, bigger question for, uh, for policy is just that the transportation sector, as everything becomes electrified, um, will be fully supported by the electric sector. Um, you know, what are the public policy implications of that? Um, can you have that type of, um, the entire economy, substantial amount of the economy being, um, rested, uh, on, um, on a electricity system that today we just questioned whether you can get to a, a clear, a clean energy electric system that can be, um, reliable with that whole new, uh, added, um, demand that would come on because of electric vehicles. So those are just some of the questions, uh, you know, again, you know, when I think about clean energy, uh, I believe in the need to, uh, climate change and the like, but, um, I also think that, that transition has to be, has to produce a reliable clean energy, uh, system and, um, and that, uh, that I think is an important goal. So, um, bringing it back to CPS Energy, uh, the flexibility needed to ensure clean energy comes from, with reliability and affordable cost. As an observer of CPS, the flexible path, um, it's kind of leading the way and explaining to customers that the importance of leaning forward, uh, on clean energy development, but maintaining that system reliability and affordability goals, they, they have to come together, um, because if you don't, if, if you don't watch out, um, for that, you have customers that can't afford, uh, or, um, a system that doesn't provide the economy with the reliability it needs. Um, so, so the message, I guess, that I, I say, and I, again, I don't think this is, um, um, you know, this is a new comment, but, uh, all stakeholders need to find a way to better explain the importance of that balance. Um, and that's, that's kind of the message, at least on that section of my presentation today. Um, so I wanted to get back then to what I've done, uh, what I do, a little bit, uh, more, um, is looking at risks, um, that are front and center and that's page sixty-five. So I think I explained, so I, I kind of took down some, uh, risks that I saw, uh, on public power utilities, um, and then, uh, I have some comments in here on CPS. Uh, so the first one, I think I've talked a little bit about the outcome of the federal election, not, uh, I have no, um, taurus in that race, sir. Um, uh, but just wanted to point out that if there is a quickening pace in the timetable, uh, you know, the COT reduction and costing apply, uh, you know, could be a, a, a big, um, a big factor, um, for utilities that are not prepared how to manage that. Uh, a second item, uh, general fund transfers to city, uh, uh, this pressure due to COVID-nineteen. Um, there are, is evidence across the country, some, some cities are having some, uh, difficulties, um, and having to defer raising taxes, for example, for general government services, um, and, uh, finding, uh, that getting to their utilities, not only the electric, but water, sewer, others, uh, you know, it's a, it's a common, it's a, it's not a new risk, um, for public power. Uh, city councils often will, uh, find a way to get as much, uh, transfer as possible to lower the need to raise taxes. Um, and, uh, what's needed, uh, public power utilities that have strong utility policies that, um, recognize business requirements. Um, CPS has, uh, always had a above-average transfer, uh, rate. Um, but the rates, uh, the retail rates have remained below average and competitive, uh, and, uh, the capital investment rate has, uh, has been, uh, uh, favorable and, um, policies are sound. So it's not necessarily a particular risk, um, for CPS, uh, you know, very well could find some pressures on coverage ratios and things like that, but, uh, as far as this particular factor, not, uh, not something to, um, uh, as I see observing as a, as a risk. Uh, trend in social battery storage and EV development, I've already mentioned that one. Um, then on the next page, on page fifty-six, uh, again, um, COVID-nineteen forbearance, there is a cost to that in that, uh, cost, um, uh, lost revenues, um, but- But as an, as an industry-ish factor, municipal utilities are unregulated or self-regulated. And their rate setting is more in line with customer community needs, and it, you know, that's being managed well because of that flexibility to raise rates or to, you know, make policy the way the city wants to. And I, I found it compelling that CPS Energy has gone out of its way to ensure customers about the difficult times we're having, and this is a response. And I, you know, the regulatory boards are getting more and more applications from investor owns to end forbearance. But having the local control is a positive consideration. Another risk factor is that there's been questioning about the capability to manage industry transition, municipals being able to manage industry transition. Kind of the high point of this was about a year ago, Jacksonville Electric, the major utility, I think they're the fifth largest in the country. The prior management there basically had a campaign to suggest that the JEA was not capable and that it needed to be sold. And that was a, a, an effort that went on for quite a while. Well, that, you know, that manager is no longer there, and the utility has kind of reversed and realized that they do have a strong capability. From my observation, that most utilities that I've come up, come up with over the past decades have, have had a very strong capability of positioning themselves for change. And this is, maybe this is the third industry change that I've been through. You know, if you recall electric deregulation, that was going to strip away all revenues of municipals, and I believe Texas law was that you had to study it, you didn't have to enter it. But the question was, why would you switch supplier if, you know, you're already offering competitive rates as CPS and other municipals were doing? So, I don't, I don't, I believe there might be one city-owned utility that now offers choice. So, the capability issue is really, I think, non-issue, and that's proven by the policies that have been so far put in place. Maintaining competitiveness is a hallmark of the municipal systems. They're typically lower priced. I think it's nationwide, it's about 12% lower, public power utilities versus investor owns. So, you know, I think that CPS has been maintaining that, obviously with the transition issues that are coming forward, you know, that remains challenging. One other one, one other risk that I wanted to point out is cybersecurity. This is a, an evolving risk that all businesses are facing. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, it's a continuing risk, and there's a pretty good source of information. The National Federation Municipal Analysts has a white paper, page 57, that this just goes through some of the questions that they're asking municipal utilities and all issuers of bonds that, you know, for disclosure. So, investors have a good sense of what, what is being done. And I know from what I hear, see in the risk management program here at CPS, and APPA has a very active program as well. You know, it's being responded to, but, you know, cyber thieves are getting, getting more and more capable of getting around things. So, then I just wanted to mention a couple factors, credit agency considerations, and that's page 68. So, the credit outlook from each of the credit agencies for the sector is stable at this point in time. Obviously, there's a recognition that COVID-19 is adding pressures largely, the expectation will be on coverage ratios. But usually, when a credit agency assigns an outlook to a sector, it's basically saying that the risks that are, are there are able to be managed well, enough that, you know, an investor can look at the sector and feel that there's not a major change. The other day, one of the agencies, S&amp;P, came out with a report that is saying that because of the wildfires in California, again, pointed to the risk of, of climate change and its impact potentially on, on, on utilities as well as then on how investors view the credits. You know, their point again was could be a risk, hasn't, you know, they have not downgraded anyone at this point in time. But it is something that, you know, as a credit analyst in the past, my, my thought always had been is, is a utility that is focused and looking forward and putting into place plans, engaging with its customers, its stakeholders, and putting forward reasonable plans, you know, with the caveat of reliability, affordability. I think that, you know, I suspect that, you know, that stable outlook should be maintained. But, you know, that's something that we'll, we'll see. Fitch has a fundamental factor I thought was important to mention. They call it revenue defensibility. It's their major factor that, and that means that they heavily weight the rate process, its use and the flexibility to recover costs. This is a key factor in governance, the ability to rationalize a rate increase and provide that commentary then to customers. And, and it's done, and needed to be done in a timely way. And I think that's a very important part of the way a successful utility is governed. And I, as I pointed out again, my observation with CPS and its governance, its management is, is way up there in credibility and reputation. I don't think there's any, any question today that they're doing the things that are needed to proceed in a, in a way. They're, you know, I, I believe, well, they have the highest rating in the United States for a municipal utility, and that is, you know, that's a positive indication of that. And then, as I point out, the rating agencies, investment firms, you know, exchange traded funds, these different finance vehicles, they're incorporating ESG factors in their credit investment decisions. And this is, you know, evolving and could potentially be impactful for some if they don't score high in these types of grading systems. And that, you know, that, you know, that is, could potentially be as powerful as having a rating downgrade. So, my summary today is, is basically, ESG is a new evolving lens, and investors are using to determine investment goals beyond credit and yield, investment yield. The E in the ESG for utilities is complicated as environmental factors become more pronounced, and have to be balanced with the utility's competitiveness. Sound governance essential, and again, and then while the industry is transitioning, there are stresses that are there. CPS seems to be meeting those challenges and continues to position for the reliable and clean energy grid with emphasis on affordability and stakeholder understanding of risks. And again, as my parting message here is simply, you know, I think that people are reasonable, that stakeholders have to understand the complication of the electric business, the importance of it, the reliability. And then for, you know, a good part of population, the affordability is a really key factor. And so, that's my summary. And then the only other item I wanted to say is keep up with the successes you're having against COVID-19. I, I started a presentation yesterday at APPA on their virtual conference and stating that, forget about it, COVID-19, just put in the rearview mirror now and start planning 2021, because it's, it's a, it's such a difficult thing. We, you know, we were hit a long time ago in March, and it was very, very dangerous for those couple of months. We've got to learn how to live, you know, I forgot my mask this morning, went out, went out for coffee, I had to go back a little way back home. But, you know, I think things are starting to go in the good direction. So, so that's my presentation. And again, I thank you for the invitation to talk to you today.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate that. Fantastic. Appreciate the commentary and the insight and all the information. As I noted at the beginning of my comments, and I'd like to pivot over to Dr. Chris Euster to provide some initial observations and insight relative to strategy. So, just turn it over to you, Corey.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Corey. I want to, want to thank Dan for, for his remarks and his perspectives. I think, I think they show both the opportunity and the complexity in getting to carbon neutrality. And it's especially interesting coming from a former rating agency leader of the statue, stature of Dan and his experience. You know, debt obligation and costs are a big factor for utilities. This is a capital-intensive business, and so, understanding debt and its implications, I think, are a really important part of this conversation. For us here at CPS Energy, we are going down the path of carbon reduction through the flexible path strategy. And I think Dan made some, some nice remarks about the merits of that kind of flexibility and the strategy moving forward, because there are so many unknowns. There is no silver bullet or single technology available today that we can simply just turn on. To power a city, a metro region with a population of over 2 million people, we need to have electrons available at all times and under all sorts of different conditions. So, it's going to take an integrated approach that will include resources that complement one another. And, and we have been, we've been deploying, we've been deploying that kind of strategy. We've got over 500 megawatts of solar across the state, add another 100, a little bit of feedback on the line, another 100 here locally with rooftops. So, that's 600 megawatts of solar, which again, has a very nice production during the afternoon hours. We have over 1,000 megawatts of wind across the state, west Texas wind, which has overnight production of energy, coastal wind, which has afternoon hours. We have over 800 megawatts of energy efficiency and conservation, 200 of that is demand response that we can call upon on a moment's notice. We have also built our 10-megawatt battery storage out at the Southwest Research Complex, and we are also looking to add another 10-megawatts that we are going to talk a little bit more about with a partner here this fall. So, we are starting to add that technology as well. So, you know, this, this, all of this gives us, this integrated approach gives us a much firmer way to get to zero-carbon resources, even though each individual resource has intermittency as a challenge, as Dan alluded to in his presentation. But even with this approach, there, there are hours which we, we need to rely on our, either on our traditional plants, or if they're not there, go to the market to buy that power. And if we don't have those plants, we need to buy that, that power from the, from the market. And so, we do not want to be in a place where we are buying power from the market when no one has power. And we are a big player. We, you know, we, we need to have the ability to deliver electrons to our customers at all times. The flexible power bundle, RFI, I think is providing some insights into feasibility of long-duration storage at large scales, not just 10-megawatts, but maybe hundreds of megawatts that can power for many hours. So, this will help inform and shape the upcoming RFP for 900-megawatts of solar, 50-megawatts of battery, and an all-resource approach to the firming capacity. So, I, I think, I think Dan said it very well. You know, no one really knows the timing of how all this will play out. I personally believe this decade, even these next five years, will, will give us a lot of insight, and will determine the velocity of the change, what technologies get developed, what breakthroughs get, you know, come through. And, and for me, and for us at CPS Energy, what's exciting is we are right in the middle of that with our flexible, flex power bundle, RFI and RFP, and our flex powers, our flex strategy, because we're going to see all that, and we're going to, we're going to have the information, and we're going to have the ability to, to act on what we see. So, I think we're in a very, very good place with our, our flex path strategy and where we're going. We want to be thoughtful in, in this transition. We don't want to put undue risk on our, our community by relying on, on, on the market to power San Antonio. We have always had physical assets to serve our community, and we want to continue that mission as we transition to carbon neutrality. And Corey, with, those are my remarks.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Appreciate that. You know, thank you, Dan, again, and thank you, Chris, for those comments. So, you know, hopefully today, you've kind of provided that expansive view of these challenges and these risks and what the transition, you know, should look like and the supporting strategies that we have. With that, Dr. Mackey, as Chair of the Risk Committee, I turn it over to you to see if you or your other board members have any other questions for any of the speakers.
Thank you, Corey. And I'd like to thank Dr. Euster and Dan for a great presentation. At this time, I would like to ask any of the trustees, Mr. Steen, Kelly, or Ms. Gonzalez, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no.
Okay. If there's no questions or comments, I would like for the General Counsel, Carolyn Schellman, to prepare us for closed, closed session.
You know what? I'm sorry. I'm going to go ahead and ask my question. I'm sorry. I was debating. This is trustee Gonzalez. So, I mean, I think we've heard an array of different flavors of, you know, the right balance of how we need to roll out and address climate change. So, my question, and maybe this is not for the speaker today, this might be more for CPS key personnel, is, so my question would be, you know, do we have the capacity if one of the current, one of the current plants were to close down sooner than all the data is being presented that we've had over, you know, a year that I've been on the board? So, were we risked by taking something down prematurely? Do we have data to support that we could not meet the current capacity of, we couldn't meet the demand based on current and future projections of growth in San Antonio and Burke County, et cetera?
Dr. Euster, can you help us out on that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Trustee Gonzalez, a good, great question. We size our generation to support our load in San Antonio. So, it is sized appropriately. We have a little bit of excess so that if we lose a plant or if we have a generation issue, we can still serve our community without having to go buy power from the market. And that's why there's a wholesale book that, if all our plants are running, that we can, we can sell power into the state of Texas. But bottom line is, we size our generation to our load. We're, the other interesting factor is, we are also looking to retire a number of plants this decade. We've got five gas steam units that are older, that were built in the 60s and 70s, that will have to be replaced from a generation standpoint. And we have one coal plant that spruce, spruce one coal plant that we are looking to take offline by 2030. So, we have a number of plants that we need to replace. And one of the things about the flex power bundle is that has the ability to replace it in a different way than what we've done in the past, which would be just, you know, put another combined cycle out there or another traditional plant. We're taking a different approach. We're taking, we're bringing a bundle of 900-megawatts of solar, battery storage, and an all-source component to that firming capacity to, you know, to ultimately replace some of those, those plants. So, you know, we are being very thoughtful in how we serve San Antonio and how we replace existing assets. And that's kind of the flex path, the basis of the flex path strategy.
No, but I understand all of that, and I guess maybe I didn't hear it. I'm having a hard time hearing you. So, I guess my question was, if, I mean, I know it's not as simple as turning off the switch light, right? Turn it off, turn it back on. It's not as easy as that. But my- But my question to you is, did I hear that we do have the capacity to still function in a current state by expediting to do away with a plant? Is that what I heard? Or we're not in a position to do that? And that is why we're proactively, you know, rolling out or proactively seeking an array of different forms of energy to be able to meet the demand? And to be, not just meet the demand, but to be also address climate issues or concerns?
So, Trustee Gonzalez, we do not have the capacity just to turn off a plant and still serve San Antonio without going to the market to buy power.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on that. Okay.
But over time...
And it's, and so what I'm also hearing, and I've heard it in different flavors over the course of one year, is that, you know, we are committed not just because whether we have the current president, or a future president, or the current mayor, or a future mayor. It's my understanding, or at least I'm committed to, if we can do it sooner than later, once we have, again, a way to replace how we do business today, and it be more environmental-friendly, we would definitely, at least that's what I understand, and what I would like to seek is that we would do it sooner than later, regardless of who's in office, at a national level or at a local level. Is that a fair...
Yes. That's, Trustee Gonzalez, what I would say is, we're very open to our transition, and that's, you know, the beauty of the flexible path. And the flexible power bundle is basically our first step in going down that path of getting to a cleaner generation mix.
Okay. This is, thank you.
This is Paula.
That's Paula for now.
I'm going to chime in. I understand you had your question answered. You know, it is absolutely doable to transition the portfolio. I mean, what we did is, we closed the Dealey unit, and we replaced that with the Rio Gas Unit. We actually bought the units early, and then when the transition happened to close the Dealey unit, it was very seamless. So we have the capability to make transition. I think that the challenge that we have are, there are times, like Chris says, Dr. Euster says, we typically have excess capacity, but a lot of our portfolio is older. And sometimes we're relying on those older units, and they, what we call trip. You can have units trip, and if you sell your units and the timing that you have, you can cause a lot of exposure to the market. Doable, but just exposure to the market. And if you really believe in climate, your exposure to the market in Texas is primarily fossil. So are we really making a change in the industry? Are we making a change, and we still have exposure, and we're not really addressing the pillar of environmental responsibility fully? That said, we can do it, and I think we can do it. We've signed up to do the Paris Accord by the Board ratifying and endorsing the cap. That's 2050. Can we do it faster, 2040, 2030? We're going to have to keep bringing you all analyses, and we're going to start bringing you more, more things to look at in terms of bill impact, because if we supersize the energy efficiency and step program, because it's a good thing, and at the same time, we try to accelerate the timing of closing plants, and at the same time, we try to decide we do, instead of doing 1,700-megawatts, we do 3,000, the bill impact is huge. And yes, we could do some designs that really make it cheaper for some people, but it's a zero-sum game. So every dollar we save on one group of customers causes increases in the other customers. It's almost like, it's like a balloon. You just kind of squeeze one end, and then you got to pressure somewhere else, and if you're not careful, you'll pop the balloon. We owe you a whole lot more, and the community a whole lot more, analysis. The problem is, it's not straightforward. There are all these complexities. Energy Storage is an amazing resource, however, it only has so many cycles. We don't believe it has the life expectancy that it needs. It doesn't have the duration that it needs, but there are breakthroughs. So the more and more we invest, the more we put the Flex Power Bundle out there, the more we look at the new solutions and get people to bid, that'll change the market. People are upset because it's not happening today, but it's happening pretty fast. So to your point, we will look at, what can we do faster? And we'll start to bring that. But it isn't, it isn't like a one-step process. It's probably like a 100-step process to do the things that we're talking about, and we owe you that. We're going to start bringing you some more things. On the 21st, you're going to hear, I think, some very interesting things about what Chris's team, Dr. Euster's team, was able to explore so far, and it's very encouraging. So I'm very encouraged that we're going to find those solutions and potentially be able to accelerate them. We owe you more, and we'll bring you more.
Yeah, you know, as a technologist, I mean, I understand the cost of scalability, and sometimes the implementation is something new. I mean, I understand that from a technical perspective, and in fairness, as I like to read and understand, and I'm now part of the CPS family, I understand it's a lot more complex what we're dealing with. And I guess I just want to make sure, and I know I've seen a vast improvement, not just under my tenure, but a sincere desire as all of us as trustees are asking more questions, and we see the evolution of our business model, and at the same time, sensitive, very sensitive, I believe. Sure, there's always room of improvement to communicate and to increase transparency, and, you know, regardless of the current conflict time, I mean, I understand all of that. I just want to make sure, and I'm happy to hear, that there will be more robust conversations about how we're going to have more proactive steps to increase transparency and to be able to maybe shorten, shorten that deadline. And so I thank you again for the added feedback, and looking forward to hearing some of the new stuff that will hopefully address a difference.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. We really appreciate your insights on this as well.
I'd like to thank both of y'all for your comments, and at this time, we'd like to turn it over to our General Counsel, so she can guide us into a closed...
I'd like to ask a question, if I could, before we move to the next subject. This is Trustee Kelly.
Kelly, great. Wonderful. Go ahead.
Mr. Oshinbach, the fact that you spent a lot of years with Moody's Investment Services, I assume you probably know quite a bit about CPS Energy. Could I ask you, over on Slide 59, if you could tell me what you know about our governance strategy? You say you have sound governance is essential. Do you know anything about the governance structure at CPS Energy that you could comment on? Hello?
Hey, Dan, can you help us out on that? Mr. Kelly asked a question.
Yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have understood that the governance structure right now does lend itself to professionals in the industry, and, you know, those types of decision-makers that can help a utility manage a, you know, again, $2 billion revenue business. And the examples that I have from the past of why I can say that it had good governance is when rates were needed to be raised, you know, financial metrics were a factor, a major factor in the discussion, and not just, you know, politics, for example. And it is something that, you know, from my experience, CPS has been able to manage through, you know, economic changes, recessions and whatnot, and still maintain strong metrics for a utility. And again, it's a business. It's not, you know, a general government-type entity, so I think the concept of the Board of Trustees and the way it works is that, again, you have that, and the length of terms, you have the ability to focus on a complicated business. You deal with commodities and all those sorts of things. Having that oversight is really, really important, instead of being one of many, you know, departments that maybe a city council has to deal with. And the politics of things are not necessarily there in a way that maybe compromises things. And, you know, again, there are many city-owned utilities that are run by their general government, and they've come up through that history and figured things out. There are examples of problems in that, the transfer policy being one. But, again, my observation from, I have to go through my memory bank of all the different, you know, policies that CPS Energy has had to implement, and it seems always to be on the facts and the need, and the needs, and not necessarily maybe, you know, what the general, you know, policy in the town, or politics in the town involve.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm going to go ahead and raise the elephant in the room. There is, and this is public knowledge, so I'm not breaching any confidentiality or anything, but it has been announced that there is going to be a move to form a petition to call a vote that, if successful, would move the governance of CPS Energy from its current independent board and make it a department of the city of San Antonio. And I don't want to catch you off guard, but I guess the question is, would, is your initial view of that positive, particularly from a rating agency perspective?
Um, well, let me, I can only go back to saying that, you know, CPS has demonstrated, CPS Energy has demonstrated over an extended period, and, you know, again, my observations come from, I was the lead analyst, which means I read the newspapers, I read the financial statements. I was not a resident, but I see, you know, that was my job, to know what was going on. And all these, all those credit evaluations and the like, and they're summarized in today's credit ratings by the different agencies, that CPS has good governance, and it has made decisions in a way that has produced a, you know, sound utility. So, I mean, that would be my answer. I can't get into specifics, frankly, I've not read the petition, so, you know, it seems to be a bigger fix than what's needed, if there is anything needed.
Great. Well, again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I appreciate your general thoughts on that, and that's helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, any other questions or comments?
No.
If not, then Ms. Shelman, would you please guide us into closed session, please?
Yes, sir. At this time, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees convening as the Risk Management Committee will move into closed session pursuant to provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for consultation concerning attorney-client matters under Section 551071, deliberations on real property under Section 551072, prospective gifts or donations under Section 551073, personnel under Point 074, security personnel or devices under Point 076, economic development under Section 551 Point 087, to deliberate voters take final action on competitive matters under Point 086, or to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Point 89, Point 089. It is 3:23 PM, and the Board, at the conclusion of executive session, will reconvene in open session.
Can I...
Trustee Vice Chair, Dr. Mackey, we're actually almost 10 minutes ahead. Can I suggest we take a 10-minute break to get us back into executive session, sir?
Absolutely. The time right now is 3:24, 3:24. Why don't we take up at 3:35, which is the exact time we supposed to begin executive session?
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.[302.58]
Ever, yes, been a while, not much, how about you? I'm not sure why I called back yesterday, just wanted to talk to you. And I was thinking maybe later on, we could get together for a while. Been such a long time, and it's been a short night. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. But there's a woman going, and she starts around, and I'd really love to see it tonight. We could go walking through the woods, take a drive along the beach. I stay at home with my TV, seeing pretty pictures that I'm not into. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. But there's a woman going, and she starts around, and I'd really love to see it tonight. I won't have no conversation, so you don't have to lie. Keep on swinging that game before, say I love it the same as I. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. But there's a woman going, and she starts around, and I'd really love to see it tonight. I won't have no conversation, so you don't have to lie. Keep on swinging that game before, say I love it the same as I. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. But there's a woman going, and she starts around, and I'd really love to see it tonight. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. But there's a woman going, and she starts around, and I'd really love to see it tonight. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. But there's a woman going, and she starts around, and I'd really love to see it tonight. I'm not talking about believing, and I don't wanna change your life. There's a woman driving, I can see her driving. She's really alive, and you're the biggest part of me. Hey, I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the biggest part of me. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the biggest part of me. Make a wish, baby, well, I know we'll make it come. Make a wish, baby, all the things I want for you. You know that now, there's not a way down on you. We could push you where you want, so that we may stop you. I'm in love with you, I'm in love with you. She's the life that breathes me. Hey, I feel that forever, we're gonna get together. You're the biggest part of me. Make a wish, baby, well, I know we'll make it come. Make a wish, baby, all the things I want for you. You know that now, there's not a way down on you. We could push you where you want, so that we may stop you. I'm in love with you, I'm in love with you. She's the life that breathes me. You're the biggest part of me. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the biggest part of me. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the life that breathes me. You're the biggest part of me. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. Make a wish, baby, well, I know we'll make it come. Make a wish, baby, all the things I want for you. You know that now, there's not a way down on you. We could push you where you want, so that we may stop you. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the biggest part of me. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the life that breathes me. You're the biggest part of me. I'm not even loving you, I'm just dying to be. You're the life that breathes me. You're the biggest part of me. I was tired of my lady, we've been together too long. Like a worn out recording, all the favorites gone. So what she made me do, sleeping, I read the book on the bed. In the personal column, she wants to show me. If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. If you're not in the job, if you have a flame. If you like making love at midnight, in the dark, it's a shame. I'm the love that you fall, by the way, and the trip. I didn't think about my lady, I know that sounds kind of weird. For me and my old lady, falling under the same old door. So I wrote you the paper, took out the person I had. Even though I know but it's over, I thought it wasn't a plan. If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. I'm not wanting to tell you, if I have to change my name. I got to make you like the ball, I'm the only red tape. Have a fun, I'll be here, let me play on the tape. So I waited with high hopes, and she walked in with a smile. I knew her smiling and kissing, I knew the curve up. It was my old lady, and she said, "Oh, it's you." Then we laughed for a moment, then I said, "I never knew." If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. Have a feeling you'll try, have a taste of your feet. If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. Have a feeling you'll try, have a taste of your feet. If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. Have a feeling you'll try, have a taste of your feet. If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. If you're not in the job, if you have a flame. If you like making love at midnight, in the dark, it's a shame. I'm the love that you fall, by the way, and the trip. If you like me, that's for God, just call in the rain. I'm not wanting to tell you, if I have to change my name. I got to make you like the ball, I'm the only red tape.
Little miss, both that day he left the shack. What that one long miss, he ain't coming back. In your heart, you made that, just the heart, you made it real. Little miss, I'm still living, and I'm really wrong. I'm still watching, 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 watching. One more round, little miss. Little miss, I'm still watching, watching. 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 Little be right, you be big, one day you got the night. Then go, you're lying, you're getting, you're one of them. Make a wish, baby, I'm going for the last one, you're the best. She's one of them, she's a girl, she's got, she's not a girl. One more round, little miss. Little miss, I'm still watching, watching. Little miss, I'm still watching, watching. One more round, little miss. Little miss, I'm still watching, watching. 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 Little miss, I'm still watching, watching.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
We still call the way. We still call the way. We still call the way.
Since she went, goodnight. Now she's gone, and I hope too. We still call the way. We still call the way. We still call the way. Call the way. Call the way.
The big home city, the lonely place. I saw the dream of a land dancing. There were the girls, but now they sing like me. You came along, you touched me, set me free. So sweet, I said, "Please don't doubt me, you cheat." Flying so high, we used to ride on those streets. Little love is a precious thing. All your honey, I don't understand. It's another day in paradise, loving the night when you're feeling the sun rise. See that I'm losing my mind, just another day in paradise. I'm a little drunk, listen to the ski come back. That's the moonlight, on the beach we're in the air. I'm starting to get the scene that can't help apart, the state. All that seems like shit, and then it goes. It's just another day in paradise, loving the night when you're feeling the sun rise. See that I'm losing my mind, just another day in paradise. I woke up this morning, with sunlight in my eyes. Guess it was only a dream, I knew the city outside. But I look at you sleeping, honey, now I'm with you long. Anywhere with you, compared to... It's just another day in paradise, loving the night when you're feeling the sun rise. See that I'm losing my mind, just another day in paradise. It's just another day in paradise. Loving the night when you're feeling the sun rise. See that I'm losing my mind, just another day in paradise.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly. Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
In a way, haven't seen you in a while. How have you been? Have you changed your style and your face? That we've grown up different things. Don't be the same. And you've lost your fear of me. So let's leave it alone. Cause we can't see eye to eye. There ain't no good guy. There ain't no bad guy. There's no need to ask me, we just disagree. I'm a white man. I'm a white man far away. How about you? Have you got faith in what you can do? We're not just trying to get along. We were friends. But now it's the end of our love. So let's leave it alone. Cause we can't see eye to eye. There ain't no good guy. There ain't no bad guy. There's no need to ask me, we just disagree. So let's leave it alone. Cause we can't see eye to eye. There ain't no good guy. There ain't no bad guy. There's no need to ask me, we just disagree.
Why do you need me? Were you looking for my affection? Do you need me? Don't you know I'll always be your girl? You don't have to come to me, I'm beautiful. I've got loving eyes. Oh, my. You don't have to tell us, I know you were fooling me. You don't even know her. You don't have to tell us, I know you. You've been lonely, and it's behind your eyes. You've been lonely, are we close? I know. You don't have to come to me, I'm beautiful. I've got loving eyes. I know, I know. And I can tell, I can tell. Tell us, I know you. You don't have to tell us, I know you. Tell you were fooling me. You don't have to tell us, I know you. Tell us, I know you. You don't have to tell us, I know you. You don't even know you.
It was late in December, the sky turned to snow. All around the day was going down. Nights like a river, beginning to flow. I must beat up my mind, because I'm trying to. Yes, don't fall in the fading light. Trying to. I need to get on the last train. Well, I'm not the kind, living life. The years run too short, and the days too fast. Things you mean, all the things that don't matter. What's just now left. My life gets hard, just as I am passenger. There's something back there, but you left that. I know, it's my passenger. I need to get on the last train home tonight. Yeah, the act of fulfilling your soul, starting to smile. Don't know why, you should feel that I have something to learn. It's just a game that you play. Walking through the trees, she knocked on the door. Now I'm thinking, something's been flying. I can't come towards you, once you're still alone. You reach out your hand, but you're lost in love. I am passenger. I know you're in and you're young.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
The open meeting will resume shortly.
I'm like, oh, I am passenger. I need to get on the last train.
My name is Mr. Problem, you ought to help me with mine. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, this girl's got a knack. You wanna be a lady stammer, you oughta know what to say. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, you can go on just wait. In that sweet school down on Ford and Sixth Street. She would tell you that's no way to be. You're running big, I'm the reason I'm a little fool. I never said it, but I did it before. Yeah, oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Lady, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. You come through the corner, fire, you're taking me to the church. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, you make me a happy man. While I wait for all your company, I'm sleeping in the shoes. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, 'cause I wanna go free again. In that sweet school down on Ford and Sixth Street. She would tell you that's no way to be. You're running big, I'm the reason I'm a little fool. I never said it, but I did it before. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Lady, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Don't give me that, just give me a little more. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, if I had my somebody. Oh, I'm on the street, you can tell me. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Oh, I got to know, I got to know. Lady, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Oh, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know. Lady, I got to know, I got to know, I got to know.
It's dark in the morning, I stare out the window at night. So don't do something to me. You knocked on me without closing the door. I didn't send any way. Now I'm thinking more than I missed you before and now. Well, I'm coming, God knows. 'Cause you left me just when I needed you most. It's dark in the morning, I stare out the window at night. Think about where to keep my eyes on me. I think... It's dark in the morning, I stare out the window at night. So don't do something to me. You knocked on me without closing the door. I didn't send any way. Now I'm thinking more than I missed you before and now. Well, I'm coming, God knows. You left me just when I needed you most. Oh, you left me just when I needed you most. You left me just when I needed you most. The sun goes down, it's a silky day. For the moon, it's a milky way. You got to cheer me, baby. We could think something nice. It's just the right time of the night.
Please stand by, the CPS Energy Board of Trustees is in executive session. The open meeting will resume shortly.
The star in the west is the best. It's the right time of the night, making love. Though you're talking, you're kind of calm. And you're promising anything you know. We could think something nice. Ooh! It's dark in the night of the night. The star in the west is the best. It's the right time of the night, making love. I got you, you got me. You're even moving on, we can touch deep. I'll be the one for you, I. They'll be sad, you know I'm the one. It's the night of the night, making love. I know you're good, oh God, it's the night of the night. The star in the west is the best. It's the right time of the night, making love. It's the night of the night.
The sun comes and there's rain. It's dark, it's the wind is right, it's everywhere. Fire and whiskey, oh, it's getting into heaven. Just the way you think, me. It's not far, it's just that way. We can dance. Wind is right, I know it's everywhere. Oh, it's getting into heaven. Just the way you think, me. Day, take your way, when I'm away. The breeze is getting warm. I'm having fun. Day, take your way, when I'm away. All the love that you gave, everywhere. Day, take your way, when I'm away. We hold me, and I'm having fun. The sun comes and there's rain. It's dark, it's the wind is right, it's everywhere. Fire and whiskey, oh, it's getting into heaven. Just the way you think, me. Day, take your way, when I'm away. The breeze is getting warm.
We take those off, where the young are gonna go. The shadow's got a pool, she's trying hard to make free. But they get to be created. Watch her all night, she must've lost her mind. Boy, he's the thousand ten. Never come and see what you wanted to say. Oh, it's a real life. But the devil really wants you. I don't think it's right. He's never made for me. And she runs it through her apology. Everybody else would surely know. You watch your mouth go. It's dark in the morning, where the young are gonna go. Well, he can still remember the pleasure of life, from this time. She won't let go. She's the one that's in the light. He's the one that's in the light. Watch her run it through her apology. Everybody else would surely know. You watch your mouth go. And the love is...
Hello?
The CPS Board of Trustees is returning from executive session. Please hold while we bring the trustees back into the meeting. The meeting will resume in just a moment. Okay Chair Steen, the board has reconnected.
Is Dr. Mackey on the line?
Yes.
Oh good. Do you want to bring him out of executive session? Or do you want me to?
No, you go ahead.
Alright, well then I'll actually defer to Carolyn Shelman, Ms. Shelman.
Okay, Mr. Steen, let's first just confirm for the record that we have a quorum. I've heard you and Dr. Mackey both. Is trustee Gonzalez on the line?
Yes, I am.
And Mr. Kelly, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay. Well then, I will report that it is 4:54 PM and the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, which has been in session as the Risk Management Committee, has concluded its executive session. Is now back in open session during the closed session. No matters were discussed other than those that were posted. No votes were taken. And no other business was conducted other than what was posted and approved. So we are ready to proceed with the open session.
Alright, we're back to Agenda Item 10, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
The motion from Dr. Mackey, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second for Mr. Kelly. We'll just go ahead and do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then the meeting's adjourned, thank you. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.